This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and is not to be considered a public meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Mrs. Ellis?
Present.
Mr. Glenn?
In the flesh.
Mr. Kilgore is absent. And Dr. Turner?
Here. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members have had the opportunity to see the agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes. Item five on the agenda, reading and signing of the minutes. Minutes of the regular meeting held on July 19, 2021, and a special meeting held on July 26, 2021. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as written? Moved by Ms. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Item six on the agenda, six A, Mount Healthy Teachers Association?
There's nothing from them.
Thank you. Item six B, communications announcements, public input?
Nothing.
Seven, the Great Oaks Board Report. Ms. Ellis?
Okay, I found it on my phone, but not the one I copied. Okay, the President and CEO, Harry Snyder, discussed three specific areas of focus for the 21-22 school year. Career readiness of students, culture, and health, wellness, and safety. Okay. The other thing is college credit plus classes. The Educational Program Design and Evaluation Committee received a list of college credit plus classes offered at Great Oaks Career Campus in person or online. These classes allow students to earn transcript college credit during the high school day without leaving campus. These courses include English, Composition 1 and 2, College Algebra, Biology, Chemistry, Anatomy, and Physiology, Government Psychology, American Government and Politics, Probability and Statistics, World History, Interpersonal Communications, and Sociology. Okay, blended learning, the Board approved Policy 2370.01, which defines blended learning and authorizes the President and CEO to develop program guidelines and specific procedures for blended learning opportunities, provided they follow a set of requirements laid out in the policy. Law Oaks Ribbon Cutting. The Board Chair, Bill Ferguson, reminded the Board that the ribbon cutting ceremony for Law Oaks Career Campus is Wednesday, September 8, at 4:30 p.m. at the campus. This ceremony is open to the public and celebrates the completion of new construction and renovation of the existing buildings. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Item eight is the Legislative Liaison Report, and it's a short one tonight. They're not doing a whole lot in Columbus right now. So the only item I have is on redistricting. The U.S. Census Bureau has released its data from the 2020 census. This means that Ohio's general assembly and congressional boundaries must be redrawn by the Ohio Redistricting Commission. Ideally, this will happen quickly, but procedures are in place to extend the deadlines if the parties can't agree. Can't imagine that happening, but just in case. And that's it for the legislative report. That wasn't even really legislative, but had to have something. Item nine on the agenda, report of the Treasurer, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. First of all, I have two items just for information that I did not get to press soon enough, our press agent being Ms. Coroner. She was really slammed today. No, it's not your fault, it was my fault. So we have three items that food service needs to purchase. Two are open display merchandisers, and they're going to be about $12,257 apiece. And the third item is a convection gas steamer. That's something they actually cook in. She gave me the definition, since I wouldn't recognize it, for $18,938. And we will list those on the minutes, sharing that information verbally with you during the meeting. And item A is a recommendation to accept the July schedule of bills.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B is a recommendation to accept the July financial statement.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is a recommendation to accept the fiscal certificate for the lease renewal agreement for the Early Learning Center between Mount Healthy City Schools and P.S.W. Holding Company dated September 1, 2020.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
Yeah. Who is P.S.W. Holding Company?
Well, I believe the first, the P stands for Phillips, but I'm not positive. So this is the company that handled our certificates of participation for borrowing the money, the $10 million, for the Early Learning Center. And so they're renewing it this year as we do our appropriations for putting that money in the appropriation certificate this year for the balance that we owe. And I can't tell you that number off the top of my head, and I know that Jen knows that number. Do you?
About $960,000.
$960,000. So that's what we have left to pay, and that's the amount that they need renewed to know that we are continuing to appropriate the money and then pay the money.
And my mind went in a whole different category.
Pardon?
Said my mind went in a whole different category. That never crossed my mind, that's what that was.
Well, we like to mix up the words to keep everybody guessing.
Well, I guess I should have paid no attention to the word lease. That's what threw me. And I couldn't figure out, well, what were we leasing for somebody like that?
The interesting thing is, we lease it until the very end, and then we finally own it. We own the property. This is for the building itself.
Okay. I just said I was in a different direction.
It's okay.
Okay. Glad I asked.
Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Next is the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Hawkins.
Thank you. So we wanted to open up tonight for a little bit of a discussion regarding school fees. In the past, or at least last year because of COVID, we did not charge any fees for pay-to-play with sports, and we did not charge any school fees. The pay-to-play, we decided in the spring not to charge this year. We had to make that decision early because a lot of teams practice over the summer. We did not decide about the regular school fees, so we wanted to have a time just to discuss that as a group, to get input regarding what you would like to do this year.
Okay.
So any thoughts?
Are you talking about the fees for the various classes and all of that kind? Those fees you're talking?
Yes. Some fees, depending on if a student is on free introduced lunch legitimately, some would be waived, but there are fees for certain activities at the school that are not waived. So some are waived and some are not.
So back in, I think it must have been 2019, 2020, what did we? We did something. We waived?
We waived the general fees.
The general fees.
Anything that was not attached to a specific class, like a specialty.
Okay. And that's still in place, the waiving there? So what kinds of fees are we talking about, for what sorts of classes?
You know, for instance, choir had a fee for music that students would need. We're starting a new culinary program. A lot of schools will charge a certain amount for culinary because food is involved. So class art, if you are buying special glazes, we would charge that. I guess I would be interested, from the financial standpoint, because we would like to encourage all of our students to take all of these classes, so I wouldn't want to set up an obstacle for that.
Right.
But it could be a situation where we just can't afford to waive it. So what are your thoughts, Becky?
Well, I don't know what the culinary cost will be yet.
Normally, it's about $30. Most schools would be. It's not a large amount, but that could be a large amount to a student on free and reduced lunch, and it could be a determining factor on them choosing not to take it. We are trying to write some grants for this type of thing, and I believe, you know, some of those will materialize, but we don't have one in place yet.
And again, to your point, if there are fees out there that students can't pay, and then so they choose not to take the class, that's a loss to everybody. So I, my personal opinion is that we should waive the fees again this year.
Do we have any sense of what the overall cost to the district would be if we do that?
I know that three years ago, we took in, every year, excuse me, let me start over. For a period of about six or seven years, the fees continued to decline as more and more people are unable to pay. And the last year that we collected regular fees, it was below $10,000. So I'm sure it's going to continue to decline as we see more and more issues. And so it's, and it's a lot of work for the schools.
It's true.
To the school secretaries, because they're the school bookkeeper also, except at the high school. And it's a massive amount of work for the little bit of money.
It's true. I would also agree that, especially this year, as many families are trying to rebound from COVID, that, you know, we not charge fees this year. If a student is on free introduced lunch, some of their fees are waived anyway by law. So maybe take this year and look at the impact and see what we can do with grants, and then revisit reinstating fees next year, would be my recommendation. Thank you. Would you?
I would agree with that.
Sounds good to me. And everyone else? What do you think?
That's fine. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll let the schools know. All right. Other informational items. The Early Learning Center is rapidly being completed. So there was a change order for the warming kitchen telephone, and we did have three additional weather days over a period of around five months. So those were two change orders that came through, as well as just some general informational items. This year, our expulsion hearing officer for the 2021-2022 school year will be Jovetta Macon, and then if, for some reason, she cannot do it, it would be Dr. Harris would be the backup. This year, we will have our 504 compliance officer, and that will be Dr. Sarah Wilson. The following will be the Title IX anti-harassment compliance officers, Chuck Ogden and Jana Wolf. And normally, this does fall under human resources, but just in case we had a situation where someone wanted to specifically talk to a female, then Jana would be available to serve in that capacity. Okay? All right. Item B is the recommendation to approve the following change order for the Early Learning Center, and this is order number 28. It is the monument sign.
A what?
So with the Early Learning Center, a sign was not included in the plans, so unfortunately...
When you say a sign?
Like that says, Early Learning Center. Like, all of them have, like, where we put information about the schools, they forgot, or they did not include a sign in the plan.
Is that one of those you can change, like, out from here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. All of our buildings have similar signs, so the cost, sometimes amazed by the cost, but we had to run electric out, we had to put in conduits, we had to order the sign. There were a lot of things involved, and it just was left off the plans.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the recommendation that the Mount Healthy City School District participate in the Student/Teacher/Observer programs of the University of Cincinnati, Xavier University, Mount St. Joe, Miami University, Cincinnati Christian University, Antioch College, Wright State University, Eastern Michigan University, Franklin University, and Grand Canyon University during the 2021-2022 school year.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is the recommendation that Mount Healthy City School District participate in the educational affiliation agreement with the University of Cincinnati College of Nursing to provide clinical experiences for nursing students during the 2021-2022 school year.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
I will add a little bit here. So we are opening the Health Center at the high school, and that allows for a great partnership where, you know, there's nursing students that need to get their clinical hours, gives them the opportunity to come up and be in our schools and give services to our students.
Any additional discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is the recommendation to approve the continuation of system preventative maintenance and full coverage extended warranty by EMCOR, ALC. This is all of our security systems.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
Yes. Does this include our new building?
It does.
Okay.
And this is a yearly cost. Gary Crowley, our new business manager, is looking into how we can save money on that, if it's feasible, for instance, to hire an HVAC person for the district, if it would be cheaper than using all of the service agreements. So that's why we're doing it for one year while Gary has a chance to study that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is the recommendation to approve the continuation of system preventative maintenance and full coverage extended warranty by EMCOR, ALC. This is all of our security systems.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Item G is the recommendation to approve the continuation of Public Schoolwork School Safety Program for staff and students for a period of three years. The total cost is $18,385 per year.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
I will add a little bit about this. This is the program that we use to make sure that we are compliant with everything in the district, from how to handle bloodborne pathogens, to also, you know, slips and falls, any new policy, we would put there, and all of our staff go through and use that. We also use Public Schoolworks in the buildings for recording discipline and things like that. So by using that program, it does save a lot of time and money to have, to hire an individual trainer to do all of the professional development.
Okay. Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Recommendation to approve the continuation of ProSource for leasing and maintenance of copiers throughout the district for a period of five years. The total cost is $225,520.80.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any, sorry, moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
It is. It is a lot of money. And one thing that we were able to do with our new ID badges, we're going to be utilizing a system where, instead of somebody sending something to a printer and it just printing, you have to scan your badge and then it prints. Sometimes people change their mind about printing things. And so if, after 24 hours, they have not scanned, then it's deleted from the queue. But it is a significant cost, and by doing five years, we were able to save money on the total contract.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item I is recommendation to accept the following donation to Mount Healthy Athletic Department, $200 donated by Andrew and Patricia Boline, and $500 by Jamar Daniels.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Were these just sort of...
These were monetary donations. We also have another donation that will be on next time. Just recently, David Montgomery donated football cleats and gloves to all of our football players. So that was a very generous donation as well.
Are these two earmarked for any particular use?
They were earmarked for football.
For football? Okay.
And cheerleading.
And cheerleading.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item J is the second reading for the recommended Mount Healthy Board of Education bylaw and policy change. We discussed this last month on personal communication devices. In grades pre-K through six, students in pre-K through six may carry their cell phones during the school day, as long as they are silenced and out of sight, in a pocket, purse, backpack, locker, et cetera. Students may use cell phones in class only with the permission of teachers. Grade seven through 12, students in seventh through twelfth grade may carry their cell phones during the school day, as long as they are silenced and out of sight, in a pocket, purse, backpack, locker, et cetera. Students may use cell phones in class only with permission of the teacher. Students may use their phones before and after school, between classes, and during lunch. Cell phones must be put away and silenced when entering the classroom.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item K is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Hamilton County Educational Service Center for a middle school adolescent literacy coach. The cost is $48,960, and this would be paid for by the Comprehensive Literacy Grant.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
Is this for, like, second language students, or is it just actually some kids that are having problems?
Some students having problems.
Okay.
Did we not have someone to do this part of it?
We did not have a designated coach. We were able to hire that position since Jana and her team received the literacy grant, so it gives us more flexibility to hire instructional coaches and, you know, just more people to work with students that are struggling.
Any further discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item L is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Hamilton County Educational Service Center for a high school literacy coach. The cost is $23,800. That also is being paid for by a grant.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we add the line about the grant to the minutes?
No. Is it grant funded?
This one is not.
Oh, it's not.
This one is not.
Out of current.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that. I thought they were both.
All right. Okay.
Why TNL funds?
No, no other discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Item N is the recommendation to adjust the original agreement with Energy Optimizers USA to upgrade HVAC systems to increase the airflow for student-occupied spaces. The total upgrade cost is $45,140 to be paid for with S.R. III grant funds.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion?
So why this cost has come forth, the first level, we are making it into student space in order to bring back some of our students.
Of this building.
Of this building. And student spaces have different HVAC requirements than adult spaces. They need more fresh air than adults are given. So we had to make that adjustment to allow for more fresh air.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item, I know. Item N is the consent agenda. You can see a variety of things listed.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion?
It's a long one.
No questions? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, that's the end of mine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item 11, special orders, we don't have any. 12, open discussion by the Board of Education. Anybody have any discussion items they want to bring up? Looks like no. Uh, 13, Board of Education report. Uh, first item, 13A, a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Reverend Angelo Bryce regarding Open Meetings Act litigation in Hamilton County Court of Common pleas. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
13B is the date of the next Board of Education meeting. The regular meeting will be Monday, September 20th at 6:00 PM. 13C, an executive session. Uh, this is an executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Uh, more specifically, we're going to be talking about, uh, Dr. Hawkins', uh, second year of her contract, which we're very excited about. So, um.
You're excited?
Second, second year of, uh, let's, let's just say 20 or 30 that you're going to stay with us. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Glenn, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Um, any discussion? Uh, before we take the vote on this, um, Mrs. Coroner did email me, and I neglected to respond to her. Uh, we will be potentially taking a vote when we come back from the executive session. It's not on the agenda, uh, but, uh, if we need to, we, we will, uh, squeeze that in there. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes. And we're going into executive session at 6:35. Okay. Um, and I don't remember anything at all about what the wording was that we used for Becky's last time around.
It's in the minutes, okay. Let me find the minutes.
I can see, I don't have mine written. I just read them.
Last page. It was pretty simple. Move to approve the contract of Rebecca J. Brooks as treasurer of the Mount Healthy City School District's effective, blah, 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 blah. So you could move.
We'll just say amend, to modify. Okay.
Or amend.
All right. So if you want to just use the same wording, move, a motion to, to amend, modify, whatever you want to use.
What do you, seven, 13, 14, coming back?
13.
Okay.
So a motion to amend the contract of Dr. Valerie Hawkins. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. No discussion, because we already did that. Uh, could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.